Fall the meeting to order and ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
... of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the July 17th County Commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter in the white folder. And if you need a listening device, Carol can help you. She's up here in the front. Move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the commission meeting minutes from July 10th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item B is approve the special commission meeting minutes for the opt-out.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $4,657,483.23.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion is second. Comments? Commissioner Barth?
Just briefly, this month, or this week, like we often do, we have a large payment to the state from monies we collect on their behalf of $3,463,494.19. That stretches the total amount to what we see as this week's bills.
Thank you, Commissioner Barth. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is register of deeds, revenue report for June 2018. Item B is Minnehaw County Sheriff's report for June 2018. Item C is a human services 2018 second quarter report for Minnehaw County and Lincoln Counties. Item D is the Highway Department monthly construction projects update for July 2018. Item E is the Minnehaw Coroner Reports for May 2018. And those are all on file at the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Any comments? Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is abatements recommended for approval. There are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item A is the first reading and authorize the auditor to publish notice for public hearing on an ordinance to refund wheel tax pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law Number 32-5-24 to be held on August 7th at or after 9:00 a.m. at the meeting of the Minnehaw County Commission. You need a... Carol, are you going to have anything to say on that? Otherwise, I just need a motion to publish notice.
Second. So moved.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item number nine, mispetition for compromise of lien. We have DPNO number 28550 in the amount of $375. Melinda, good morning.
Good morning, Melinda Storely, Commission Assistant. The Commission Office has received an additional application for a lien compromise from the same petitioner that came before the Commission on July 3rd, 2018, to request a compromise for DPNO 31727 in the amount of $5,322.80 in order to refinance their current home and to help reduce their mortgage. After consideration, the Board authorized a compromise and release of the lien in full upon payment of $1,500. The payment to the county is still pending upon completion of the refinance. The petitioner returns with lien DPNO 28550 in the amount of $375, which represents poor relief for rent assistance recorded on June 1992 and December 1992 for him and his ex-spouse. He is requesting that his name be removed from the lien with payment of $187 or 50% of the lien amount, leaving the remainder of the lien in the name of his ex-spouse.
Questions for Melinda? Is applicant here? No. Comments from the Commission?
Sounds like a reasonable request. I'd make the motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve additional comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melinda. Next, we have opportunity for public comment if there's anyone who'd like to speak on something that is not on the agenda today. No one's moving. Move on to regular business. Item number 10 is the Minnehaw County Commission presents the 2018 South Dakota Association of County Commissioners Scholarship. Carol Muller.
Good morning, Commissioners. This morning, I would like to present to you Hannah Smith.
Come on up, Hannah.
And we're very pleased, the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners has awarded two $1,000 scholarships for 2018. The applicants need to be a child or a grandchild of a county employee, and the recipient selected must be at least a second, full-time student in the South Dakota University College or Vocational Technical School. Two recipients were picked from Minnehaw County this year. We were very pleased to have Hannah, who is the daughter of Minnehaw County Public Defender Director Tracy Smith, and the other is Parker Smith, who is the son of Minnehaw County Jail Correctional Officer Eric Smith. Parker and Eric are both working today, so they're not able to join us at this time. Hannah is a graduate of Washington High School and is currently a junior attending SDSU for early childhood, elementary education, and Spanish language. Parker's a graduate of Roosevelt and is currently a junior attending... I'm sorry. Is a junior attending USD for nursing. So, both are on the dean's list, and we're very excited to have them come forward. And Commissioner Hiebger has your certificate for you.
... to the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners Scholarship, presented to Hannah. Thanks. Thank you very much. He does like to... I did open it up. (laughter) Item number 11 is a public hearing to consider a motion to declare property legally described as east 240, 245th feet, south 210 feet of the southeast one-quarter, southeast one-quarter exception, H1, H2, and H3, 10-104-50, Burke Township, a nuisance, a public nuisance, and enact South Dakota Codified Law Number 21-10-6. Kevin, good morning, Kevin.
Good morning, Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. As this property, as you described it, is generally located one and a half miles west of the Del Rapids exit, and I have the map of the property right there. In the spring of 2017, staff received a complaint about the accumulation of vehicles and junk on this property. Staff visited the site on March 29th, 2017, and found many vehicles, trailers, recreational vehicles, and parts. Staff worked with the property owner through the summer 2017 and into the spring of 2018. Staff found that there has not been a significant improvement on the property regarding the complaint and the various junk and vehicles that are on the property. And also, since the beginning of the complaint, the petitioner has constructed a fence on the property, which you'll see in some pictures here, that staff is concerned about what is behind the fence, and maybe unknown materials lying behind it. Staff would note that if the property is declared a public nuisance, we plan on removing the nuisance items behind the fence as well as what happened in front.
Just wait. Excuse me? Just wait until it's your turn, please.
And as we have done in previous cases. The notice of the public hearing was sent to Ron and Joan Heggie, and it was received by him. A notice was also sent to property owners within 1,000 feet of the property for this hearing. And I'll just go through some of the photos here. This is an aerial view of the photo. It just so happens to coincide approximately at the same time as the complaint came in. It was in April of 2017 when this photo was taken. You can see the condition of the property. This is at the first site visit, the overview of the property. You can see many vehicles being parked on it. You can kind of see a little bit what's behind the fence on the north side of the property. And then, in May of 2017, you'll see the fence that was erected on the left side there that is still up, and I don't... We don't... I have not been behind the fence. And then, the items continually stayed on the property. So this is just kind of sample pictures of what the property condition is like. One of the concerns about the property is oftentimes, some vehicles or items are parked up close to the road and into the right-of-way. Perhaps... I think I have a picture of one in the right-of-way. I believe that trailer right there is in the right-of-way, is how far it is from the road. And yeah, there's one with pictures in the right-of-way. And there's the two vehicles right up close to the road, and that is one of the concerns of staff as well. So our public nuisance ordinance states that any deteriorated, wrecked, dismantled, derelict, or interoperable property is considered a nuisance in unusable condition in its present state, and must be placed with an enclosed permanent structure. And also lists that unlicensed motor vehicles, dilapidated or unregistered mobile homes, trailers, boats, and machineries is also part of the abandoned property under the public nuisance ordinance. South Dakota Codified Law Number 2110-6 allows Minnehaw County to declare a public nuisance and to allow the county to clean up the property and to fray the cost to the property owner. And I think I'll just finish out the rest of the pictures here. And you can see as the summer progresses, there's still items there. And they get moved around a lot, so he is working with the vehicles. The Planning and Zoning Department requests the Minnehaw County Commission declare the property as described, a public nuisance, and enact South Dakota Codified Law Number 2110-6. And I am available for any questions.
Any questions for Kevin at this point? I don't think so. Thank you, Kevin. This is a public hearing, so this is the opportunity, if you want to speak on this subject, you'd come up and identify yourself, name and address.
My name's Ronald Heggie. Forty... My address is 46998-246th Street.
Okay.
And obviously, hasn't been there and taken any pictures lately, because it doesn't look nothing like that. And also, it's been a mechanic workplace for... Since 1943. My grandpa owned it. We've always worked on vehicles. It's just something we do. And it's something that ain't going to stop either. I mean, we... That's what we do. Buy and fix up cars, build street rods, you know, and enjoy it. That's about all I can say, is it's what it is. But...
Questions or comments from the Commission? Commissioner Barth?
Mr. Heggie, you said he hasn't been by there lately. Does that mean it...
No, it doesn't look nothing like this at all. Most of them vehicles are gone.
When did you move them?
Yesterday.
Kevin, do you have a time scheduling when you were there the last time?
I was not here... There yesterday. This most recent picture I have is seven... So, the 11th, so a few days ago, right before I sent out the hearing to you, the notice.
My follow-up, Mr. Heggie, is...
Well, I was told from him, actually, that this wasn't any big, big meeting to be concerned about at all. Obviously, he didn't want me here for he could say what he wanted to say, but, I mean, we've been working together trying to get it cleaned up, but, yep, obviously, not going with it, but...
When you said you moved them, where did you move them to?
I junked them out. Took them to Gosmire's out by Hartford.
So the cars that are along the highway right there...
They're gone or moved, yep. The one right there by the highway's gone, yep.
Is everything that's on the property licensed at this point?
All, but maybe one or two.
And the rest of the debris or junk that's around the place, and I realize I know...
It's all gone. It's all picked up.
Great.
All out.
Do we want to defer for a week and have Kevin take some pictures?
We'll come back and take a picture. If that's all right.
Yeah.
The more that gets cleaned up, the better for all of us.
Yep, that's right.
We have had to clean up properties in the past.
Granted, it's been a little messier than it probably should be, but it's always been that way. Everybody... There's only one neighbor bitching about it, and the rest of them don't even have no concern at all about it.
Mr. Heggie, I've never had any official, but I've had lots of people say, "That's a mess. They should clean that up." But I've never had anybody officially tell me that I had to report it.
Well, they say it's got to be adjoining neighbors. Well, the adjoining neighbors, there's one out of probably 10 that would say, you know, it needed to be, you know, needed to be done.
Okay.
That's true. You know, the vehicles in the public right-of-way are a hazard.
Yeah, I agree with that. I mean, it's blocking the view of the corner.
Well, and, you know, we make...
But it's not that way anymore.
We make the townships take out trees that are, you know, growing...
No, this is rural.
It is. But we don't want a car to go off the road and hit a car and then...
Well, that's already happened once.
I believe you.
Somebody ran the stop sign and hit somebody, and it collided into other vehicles.
Well, if there's a cleanup...
It's a public hearing, so is there anyone else that'd like to speak on this?
Helen.
Okay. I have someone else to speak. So you'd have to sit down, sir. And if you would give your name and your address, ma'am.
My name is Eve Pickard, and I am one of the neighbors. My address is 46997-246th Street. I received this letter and this invite to this meeting. I don't know if I can speak on behalf of the other neighbors in our cul-de-sac area. Yep, right there.
Yeah.
But we have a text with... Because we have children and whatever, we have a text amongst each other. And when I received this, I didn't text, but another neighbor texted me and said, "What do you think this is about?" And so we had the conversation, and I said, "I'm planning on going." So I don't... And they agreed with me, which is, I think, the word nuisance is kind of harsh. I've lived there since 2010, and we have had no problems with our neighbors whatsoever. I love our neighborhood. I have not personally seen anything in the view of the stop sign or anything that was spoke of before. I haven't seen anything like that. I think that the stop signs are clearly marked. I have a new driver. She hasn't had any trouble in that part of the neighborhood. And to be fair, I've never actually met him before.
I don't know who you are.
Yeah. So I'm just here to say that nuisance is a little harsh. You know, is it... Some people may call it junk, but I appreciate having a mechanic that close to my house, because my husband isn't handy, so I've... I mean, you don't know this either, but I've thought, you know, if I ever have trouble, I can go to him. He's always working in the shed that's shown in some of these pictures. We don't have Home... The Home Association, we don't have anything like that. And that was one of the things that attracted me to this area, is that we don't... That we're in the country, and, you know, one man's junk is another man's treasure. And I... Nuisance, this was a surprise to me, because I don't think it's a nuisance at all. But that's my opinion.
Thank you. Is there any questions from this paper?
I'm sorry, I didn't get your first name or your... You drove by there this morning, maybe?
I did.
And did you notice any difference between...
Yes, actually, I did see them working at it yesterday. They were working around the area yesterday. Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Thank you. So anybody else would like to speak? I don't think so.
I would make a motion to defer this one week to give the county an opportunity to go look, but it would appear to me that the problem's been taken care of.
Okay. I have a motion. I have a motion and a second to defer for one week.
Is one week enough, or shall we...
Kevin, that's fine. Okay. I have a motion and a second to defer for one week, and they'll give the opportunity for the Planning and Zoning to come out and talk with you again if he thinks there's something else that needs to be moved.
There are a couple things I will get down to.
Yeah. You can talk with Kevin and see how that would work, so... Commissioner Barth?
Ron, I just have one comment, and I think you already mentioned it, but I have a concern when I look at the pictures, not so much about the nuisance, but how close those cars were to the county road. And I think that that's a concern from a safety standpoint. I agree. I appreciate that.
So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Eve, for coming. We move on to item number 12, with its authorize the chairman to sign the amendment to the joint security protection agreement between the State of South Dakota and the military in Minnehaw County. Keith, there you are.
I was like, where is he? I'm hiding in the back there. Good morning, Commissioners. Keith Whinney, Air Guard Division Supervisor. The change to the cost of the agreement there is $465, and basically, what that is, is it's just the price difference between the allocated amount from the state, which initially was in the agreement, and between the actual federal funding that drops down from the federal government. So it's just a correction in price, and since it is a change, it does have to be approved through you and the tag at the state, so that's what's before us. Really, it doesn't really affect us a whole lot, because the amount on the contract is going to fully cover our operational costs anyway. In fact, in a couple weeks or a month or so, you'll probably see me again with a reduced price on the agreement, just because it is a little bit of fat of what we need, so... But do you have any questions about anything at all?
Seems like we do this several times a year, go back and forth with budget for your office, and it's budget neutral for the county, so...
Make a motion to approve.
Motion and a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Keith.
All right, thanks.
Item number 13 is consider bid results and recommendation to reject all bids for the structural replacement 50-50-05-060 near the Baltic project number MC18-01. Bids were opened on June 27th. Good morning. You are not DJ.
No, I'm not. I'm Jacob. Jacob Mars. Yeah, we opened bids June 27th. They were 50% over. Only... We only had one bidder on the project. We'd like to rebid the project this fall. We're thinking maybe, just with the amount of wet weather, contractors are behind, it didn't have any... Didn't have any openings to do additional work, so we would request a motion to reject the bid.
Commissioner?
I know, a lot of these bids are... It's all about the timing, and if we can get in early, earlier the better, to get competitive bidding. And I fully support this, and I'll make the motion to reject the bid.
Second.
Motion and a second to reject the bid. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Jacob. Item number 14 is authorize the chairman to sign the agreement between Minnehaw County and Lutheran Social Services for the Middle School Diversion Officer. Good morning, Jamie.
Good morning. Jamie Gravitt, Director of the Juvenile Detention Center. The Middle School Diversion Officer is a program that we've had for over a decade, and it's designed to help with some low-level problems and prevent the youth from even entering a courtroom. Long-term, that helps us save by not having children in secure detention, and it reduces some of our county costs long-term. So overall, it's helpful for families and kids. I would ask for you to support this contract and authorize the chair to sign it.
Any questions? Motion?
Make a motion to authorize the chair to sign this contract.
And a second. Additional questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 15 is authorize the chair to sign the agreement between Minnehaw County and Lutheran Social Services for racial and ethnic fairness coordinator.
Hello again. This one is another position. These two positions are actually halftime positions that make up one full position. The reason we split them out into two contracts is all diversion activities are going to be moved to the state's attorney's office, since they control that to begin with. It's... I don't know why it was originally put under Juvenile Detention Center, but we're correcting that for 2020. And that's why we split this all out, to make it clear and what budget it would come from. But as far as the racial and ethnic fairness, we've had some disproportionate minority issues within the whole system, not just juvenile detention. And we have this person in place that guides our committee, and we try to find the issues that could be contributing to that and try to reduce them. One of the things that we found early on was transportation issues and forgetting about court, and both of those would end up in failures to appear. No bond bench warrants were issued, and we'd end up having youth in detention for at least a night, and we use this to reduce that. This position goes out and provides transportation to families and youth to get the things that they need so that they're not violating bond. It also... We've started a court reminder call system to help them remember as well. So it's a very valuable position to help us examine data and come up with solutions to reduce that number of youth of color that are in the system and secure detention. So I would ask that you authorize the chair to sign this contract.
Is there a motion?
The only question, and I don't know if you keep track of this, but do you keep track of recidivism of the youth that you're serving to see what the...
We keep track of recidivism when it... In regards to the court process. So from the time that that first risk assessment's done until the time of disposition, and we're looking for two things, failure to appear, and if they fail in any of the alternative programs that we offer. I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but we do keep track of those.
It'd be interesting to see those, to see if we're making progress.
Okay. Jamie, you want to take care of that?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner.
Just a question, and I'm sorry, Jamie, I don't have a lot of interaction with your office, but, you know, the whole title of this, you know, the racial and ethnic fairness coordinator position and referencing youth of color, do you have some evidence that shows that one class of person is... Or group of people is different than another as far as failing to appear and showing up and that type of thing? I mean, is there that great of a disparity that we have to focus on one group?
We compare the number of youth that were seen in secure detention and in the system as a whole, as... Compare that to the number of the population that should be represented. And we have a significant Native American disparity, lesser with the black youth. Those are our two main ones that have... We see a difference in.
Okay, so Caucasian, Hispanic, you just don't see that issue, or you just don't have as the greater... As great of numbers?
It doesn't have as great of impact on the number of kids that we have in the detention system and in the court system as a whole.
Okay.
Dealing with racial, ethnic fairness, which is called RAF, is one of the eight core strategies of JDAI, too, which we have worked with nationally and nationally been recognized for. And it's the right thing to do, and Jamie's right. We have, you know, a percentage of racial and ethnic difference in our community, and it's disproportionately represented in our JDC, and we've got all those numbers to represent that. And it's part of our plan, is to reduce those and make those numbers fair. And so this is... This is a part of the national plan that we work with, and it's the right thing to do, anyway.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
You happen to be probably a national expert on some of this stuff. Truly, you've gone all over working on this issue, and, you know, it's... Truly, you've gone all over working on this issue, and, uh, you know, it's, uh, these are difficult issues, but when we work with these youth, um, if we can help them now, it keeps them from being adult offenders, being in the adult, uh, penal system, et cetera. And, uh, I know you've got all the numbers on that, and our county, uh, it's not been my area of greatest study, but our county has made great progress over the twelve years I've been here, and certainly during your, uh, uh, time, uh, on the commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Bar. I need a motion on this to authorize the signing of the contract.
So moved.
Been using for quite some time.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
And you can just send a memo out maybe to the commission with some of that information.
I will.
That'd be great. Thank you. Item number sixteen is authorize the chairman to sign a resolution to support a f- a formal, um, review of the South Dakota Retirement System to consider Juvenile Detention Center correction positions for the South Dakota Retirement System Class B Public Safety Membership. Jamie, again.
Good morning again. Uh, last week, I briefed you on our, our desire to obtain, uh, Class B retirement for our juvenile corrections officers and, uh, and have a review of our other staff to see if they qualify. Uh, since then, we've had more communication with South Dakota Retirement System, and they suggested that we put all our positions, barring our administrative secretary, uh, in that proposal and resolution. So, today I come to you asking you to support that resolution and sign that resolution so that we can move forward with the South Dakota Retirement System to have our staff classified as, uh, in the B section of the retirement system.
Any questions for Jamie? We heard about this last week.
I, I would support, make a motion to support that.
I'll need a, I actually gonna need a roll call vote on this one, so.
Okay.
Let me make a comment first, though.
Okay, yep.
Which, uh, you know, the fact that, uh, it's, uh, youth that you're working with doesn't make it, uh, as safe as being a, a pencil pusher and some other job. You yourself have been victims of assault, et cetera. And, uh, your staff is often attacked. And, uh, so there is a great similarity with, uh, the higher level of, uh, corrections and certainly risk involved for you and your employees.
And we are the only juvenile correction center in the state of South Dakota that is not covered, and it's only because we have our own director instead of having the sheriff over our, over our agency. So that really is a big thing too, so.
Good point.
Anyway, roll call vote. Bar.
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiebarger? Yes. Karski?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you very much for that.
Item number seventeen is the Minnehaw County Liaison Reports. Are there any reports this week?
Liaison reports, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Last week, I attended the, um, library's board meeting. Unfortunately, we didn't have a quorum, but we did discuss a lot of the items that were there, so summers are just a little bit difficult. We had our meeting out in, um, Hartford. Um, most of you may not be aware that the library in Hartford will be moving because, you know, at one time, the concept of having a library within the school seemed great, but it really limited the library hours after school hours because of safety and concerns for the students. So it made sense. So they are gonna be moving the library, but it'll be more consistent hours and times now for Hartford. Um, I think it's very positive, and I, I'm not exactly sure of the location, but I think it's in their senior center in Hartford is where it's moving to. Library usage is actually, um, down about seven percent, and according to Jody Fick, our director of libraries, uh, that's kind of a bellwether of the economy. When the economy's going good, um, library usage is down, computer usage, people, job searching, and that type of thing. So, it's an indication that our economy is in good shape at this time and probably moving forward. So, um, budget-wise, they're in good shape. Um, they have a very active board, and, um, it was just nice to be able to get out there and talk to those people.
Thank you, Dean. Any other liaison reports? I think you also were, just came back, weren't you? Were you gone?
That was gonna be my new business report.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll go on to new business report.
New business. Last night, uh, late, about ten o'clock, Craig Dewey and I flew in from Nashville. We skipped the, um, closing ceremonies for the National Association of Counties Convention in Nashville. We got out there last Thursday afternoon. Um, kind of a sampling of some of the things I went to. I went to meetings for Justice and Public Safety Policy Steering Committee. I went to meetings for the Community and Economic Workforce Development Policy Steering Committee. This was Friday. These were steering committee meetings. Um, Friday morning, I attended the Rural Action Caucus. We actually had Senator Lamar Alexander speak to that group about some of the issues that is more rural, and yes, Minnehaw County is a rural county. Um, um, you know, what's happening economically and, um, you know, na- on the national scene. So, very interesting, um, uh, speak, uh, topic as far as that goes. Um, I attended a meeting on weather trends and forecasting a year out. That was very interesting in itself on a lot of different levels. We had our general session. Eddie George, ex-NFL, Heisman Trophy winner, spoke at that. Um, just a very motivating individual. And, uh, Sunday morning, and yes, we went from seven-thirty in the morning till eight, nine o'clock pretty much every night. Sunday morning at seven-thirty, we had our, um, meeting with some of the other rural counties, Idaho, Montana, North Dakota, Wyoming, et cetera, um, to prepare for the general session. I attended on Sunday then from nine o'clock till about four-thirty. Uh, three different meetings on criminal justice and behavioral health, um, screenings and that type of thing. Just, uh, we're, we're truly, as Jeff said, on the cutting edge in a lot of these issues with things going on with our staff there, and Serska was also there. And we're, we're truly, I mean, it's not that we can't learn something new from everybody else, but we are, we're, we're leading the country in a lot of these issues on criminal justice and, um, how we divert people from going to jail, so, but it's, um, always, uh, being able to learn is always a good thing. Um, yesterday morning, we had our, the business meeting for the National Association of Counties, very interesting election process. Um, a lot of, it was the, the highest attended national meeting, um, in, I think, history for this, um, organization. And, um, elected a new second vice president, went through three rounds of balloting. Um, just to, you know, give you an idea how every vote does count, you needed twelve-hundred-and-ninety votes to win, and on the third round, it was twelve-hundred-and-ninety-six to twelve-hundred-and-sixty-five, so it was a very close. And it went down to the last state, state voting, and that was New York. Um, so, very great organization, um, leading the way for us in helping us become part of the national picture as far as counties. So I'm glad we're a member of NACO, and, um, it was, it was good to attend. I'll, I'll be bringing more to you. I've got a few other projects that I'm gonna be working on based off of this meeting that I think will benefit, uh, the citizens and taxpayers of the county, so glad I could go.
Thank you, Dean. I definitely thought of you guys a lot. I've gone in the past, and it's a wonderful convention, and we definitely have gleaned a lot of very important things from that group of people and, and have helped to push us forward, so.
Yeah, I, I kinda lost a whole weekend, you know, go from Thursday to Monday, and forget it's Saturday and Sunday, so, but yeah, that was, it was full.
Madam Chair, questions for Commissioner Karski. Uh, how many, uh, South Dakotans were on the trip? And, uh, who did you meet from other places, Hawaii, Rhode Island, whatever?
Uh, yeah, and I didn't bring their cards, but met several people from, uh, North Carolina, um, and, and national. Uh, from South Dakota, we had, I believe, there were five or six other commissioners, um, a few other, um, county staff people. We had our state staff there, so I think there are probably close to a dozen from South Dakota there. Um, we had ten, as a state, ten votes. Um, I was carrying three of them for the national office, so, um, I hope I represented it well. Our guy won, let's put it that way. So, um, yeah, um, the people from, yeah, even from, um, Robert Wilson, our former, um, assistant was there, and he introduced me to their retiring treasurer who ran a very interesting program for youth. And I'm, and I'm excited about, um, taking her direction on that and trying to put that into our county, so.
Always a good, a lot of good things to learn.
Fantastic.
Any other new business? Carol?
Oh, I had one more thing, just if I could.
Finish it up, yep.
Yep. Um, this kinda ties in, but not directly. Last night on the flight home from Dallas, we were supposed to originally fly out of Chicago, but we ended up going to Dallas so we could get home yesterday. A lot of ladies on the plane from the Catholic Daughters Association, they're having their bi-annual meeting in S- in Sioux Falls. It was a big win for their convention and visitors bureau. I'm sure, you know, we had probably a little divine help in getting here safely with that many, um, ladies from that organization, but I just wanna welcome them to our community. There's over a thousand women here for the balance of the week from Catholic Daughters of the America, um, in town, so welcome to them.
Spoken as a true member of the Chamber of Commerce.
And Catholic Church.
And we're super happy that we could accommodate with nice weather, so, yeah. Carol?
Good morning, Commissioners, Carol Muller, Commission Office. I just want to remind of, of upcoming schedule for you all in the next few weeks and for the public that may be listening also. Next Tuesday, you'll be passing the provisional budget at your July twenty-fourth meeting. And then at that day, a slight change, because you will be doing the joint city-county meeting at that time. It will be four o'clock here. Location and time change, and we're able to have four commissioners there that day. So, um, we've taken advantage of, uh, of doing that. So four o'clock, joint informational. You'll be getting a update on the archive facility and the triage concept will be presented to both the city and the county at that particular time. So just to let you know that. Upcoming also will be the GMP, the gross maximum price on the jail, so you're gonna hear a lot more about jail buildings the next couple of weeks because bids are being finalized at this time. Um, we're down to the rubber. I've been having almost daily conversations at this point, already had one this morning, as, uh, as things are falling into place, and, uh, people are feeling very good and excited about it. But you're gonna see those people in the next few weeks. Um, budget hearings then. You will not have another budget hearing until the first Tuesday in August. No, September. The first Tuesday in September. And by the end of September, you have to pass the final budget. And just as a reminder, you have three commission meetings in September. You have one off because of SDACC. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will be passing the provisional budget, but that doesn't mean there can't be changes to it, so. Um, is there any old business? Then I would look for a motion to recess the county commission meeting for signing of bills, and we'd give it ten minutes. So at about ten-fifty-two, we'll be back in to reconvene into executive session. So is there a motion to recess to signing bills?
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We are re- until ten-fifty-two.